I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public discussion? Nope. Seeing no public discussion, do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three?
So moved.
Whacker?
Yeah, I'll second.
Stacker. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Decision, discussion, or review of claims and conservation claims?
Just to let... People ask about the D.C., they like to have an explanation what good it was to the county. So this is to give the information as to what benefit the county received. I don't think that's probably all the claims yet for that trip.
Nope. Those are the people that are asking.
Well, Tom's saying it was one. And there's a lot of people.
Well, I guess there's quite a lot of meetings and conferences that people go to. I've never had seen anyone else give a presentation on conference they've gone to, except for myself. So, I guess, what's the standard here? Because we asked, I asked this last time.
What do you mean? We always give, we always give information on the meetings we're having.
Yeah, during board discussion and committee reports, not questioning any of the claims.
No, no, but that's because if this is being brought up for a vote to pay for it, that's why, that's why they asked me to ask the question. They just like to, they like to know what benefit was it to the D.C. county for whatever twelve, fourteen, fifteen hundred dollar trip?
Well... Do you want to sit through these papers, an inch plus thick? I think we could, I think we could find more than one benefit.
Well, the highlights, I still haven't heard what benefit you feel the county is receiving from that trip.
Well, where do you want me to start?
About two or three of the best, the highlights, I guess, tell what, what is the D.C. county going to gain from that fourteen, fifteen hundred dollar trip?
Well, for starters, one of the days, we had a trip over to Capitol Hill, talked with Ernst and Grassley. Grassley was only in there a short period of time, Ernst was in there the whole time. But there were multiple things that were brought up that relate to Kasuth County. One of which, I brought up EMS and how the national registry test is so hard for people to pass. And I asked her and her staff to look into that, see if anything could be done. Second, major thing that was brought up in that discussion was how drainage districts suffer from the federal government not paying their share of assessments or federal ground, which we have a district in the process of a project right now that we are trying to work with Union Slough on to get some grant money. But at the end of the day, that's, there's projects all over this county that have impacts of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, to me, I guess it's pretty easy to justify that. And if there's any concerns, you can definitely direct them to me.
I would do that.
Hearing none. More discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Well, on that point with the claims, Tammy, did you check to see if that one?
I only found two claims, both for four hundred and some dollars. Was there additional one besides that?
Yeah, there was the one for the actual regi... I've already looked these on the computer. But the one for the actual registration should have been in because it was turned in one month old, but...
Do you want to dial Brittany and we can ask her about it?
Is there anything effort in there for?
Her extension is two zero one.
You want to start signing them, Jack? On the, on the a after we vote?
She wasn't here yet when I came in, so I didn't get a chance to ask.
Hey, Brittany, it's Kyle in the boardroom. Do you know if you have a claim for me for that registration for the conference for NACO? I thought I had turned that in with the other ones, with the mileage and stuff, but I didn't see it on the list. Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Bye.
She's gonna check on it? Yeah, those are the ones that we have bound, so...
It can go in in two weeks if she finds it.
Oh, yeah, but it was turned in like four months ago, so... But, I guess, we'll handle that whenever it goes.
Do I have a motion to approve the claims and conservation claims?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Whacker. Second by?
Second.
Second by Stacker. Any discussion on the claims? Hearing none. Do a roll call vote, please.
Plag?
No.
Whacker?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Jerks?
I'll say yes. Motion carried. Three to one.
That was the right date, right?
Got a new Stamper.
Yeah, we got a new Stamper.
Got a new Stamper.
So you did, but it got stuck to that the other column that you turned in, so I didn't see it.
Okay.
You can do a handwritten one with the other one.
Okay.
I said, okay, if we do a handwritten claim for five, what do you want every week?
Did you have something else today?
We have another handwritten claim that we're doing.
Next week?
Well, it'll be, we'll do it, we're doing the handwritten claim today because it has to be paid, but it will be approved then.
Put it with that one.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, sorry.
No problem. Thanks. I just knew it was in there.
Well, thanks for checking.
Oh, I had to do the wrong one. We need one back, the thicker one. We couldn't be more consistent and have a and a on the same slide on all of them.
But that being out?
That would be an option.
Instead of reading every time where we sign? Keeps us on our toes.
I'm applying the paper flip. I moved the paper flip on that one. Tammy, you're good.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Monthly updates and veterans affairs.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Good morning.
I sent an email, didn't know if you got my handout, but in case, you got something to look at today?
I didn't see the email.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So that's as of January thirty-first, a pretty busy month. As you can see there, I had sixty-eight phone calls, eighty-four messages, fifty-nine walk-ins, twenty-five scheduled appointments with two outside the office. We did one transport and we had five hearing aids repaired. Number of system claims or system records, eleven hundred and thirty currently in my system. Claims submitted to VA as of January was forty-two. I just wanted to note that's a thirty percent increase over what I typically do when it's primarily because of the PACT Act and the changes that are associated with that. Claims ready for decision by VA is eight. Claims under development is also eight. Supplemental claims and appeals, I'm working on two of those. And I had two VA healthcare enrollments into the healthcare system. As far as training, I completed my required annual HIPAA and PII training for VA and also suicide prevention training. Registered for our state spring conference coming up in April in Des Moines. Prepping for nationals in June, which is scheduled to be in Wisconsin. And mentor training with Hamilton County on the seventeenth of February. That was actually last Friday. I went down there and spent the day with them and did give them some basic fundamental training on office setup, interviews, claims development, submitting the claims and those kinds of things, as well as some Q and A with the new director. Working with my commissioners, we're trying to set up a North Iowa Veterans Brief in March in the Bancroft area to kind of put out some veterans-centric information to veterans regarding the PACT Act and benefits and healthcare. So still developing that. Iowa Workforce Development over in Clay County, which includes part of Kasuth County here, is setting up a countywide Veterans Appreciation Day in June at O'Neal Park in Spencer. So I want to take a look at that with Heather Warren, who's developing and putting that together. Also, under miscellaneous, just working on developing the PSA and the ads for the commissioner selection. And then a little bit about the Iowa Veteran Trust Fund. Don't know if you're following that at all, but currently that fund is insolvent. It does not have any money at this point in time. Normally, that's funded by the Iowa Lottery or at least proceeds in part of it. That money was expended, and then recently, I think the governor had allocated an additional four hundred thousand to that account to cover the remaining applications from November to March. And right now, we're waiting to see what one July brings, if, if they're gonna, you know, change that process, how much they're going to put in there, if any. So I don't really have any answers on that yet, so I'm kind of keeping that in mind. Because we use that fund, or I have used that fund before, to help veterans that have dental issues several times. So we've done that where we've gotten partials and full dentures for veterans that otherwise could not afford it. Repaired and replaced tires on a vehicle for a veteran that couldn't afford tires. And some mechanical work on another pickup for a veteran. So there's different categories for which that account can be utilized, and I, I have previously utilized it for those things. Couple highlights on the PACT Act. Right now, as of August of last year, there's been over two hundred and thirteen thousand claims nationwide submitted due to just that act alone. And there's been nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand veterans that have been screened for toxic exposure. And one of the things that I'm seeing in the database when I go in and review claims, it is a federal law, VA now has to put a, a letter or a memo in the record of the veteran indicating toxic exposure, whether it's through Agent Orange acknowledging that, or through burn pits, those kinds of things. Those memorandums are showing up even in some of the county veterans' claim files right now. So they're acknowledging that. Obviously, I'm trying to get the veterans to register for the burn pit registry. There, there's been some difficulty in doing that. My understanding is VA has went back and is trying to make that process a little bit easier. But there are a number of veterans who have started that process and are halfway through and weren't able to finish it. And part of it is due to some computer issues. But a couple other things I just kind of wanted to briefly touch on. As of January seventeenth of this year, any veteran that's in crisis with respect to suicide can dial nine eight eight and go into a thirty-day treatment without even being enrolled in VA. If they're in crisis, they can get that thirty days of residential care. As an outpatient, they can get ninety days. So that's an effort by VA to kind of help curtail some of this twenty-two-a-day suicide type thing. And that's without registering anything. If the veteran's in crisis, they can make that call and get it in. So that was a positive. Another positive is VA life insurance that's available to VA. For veterans, they can get up to forty thousand dollars worth of whole life in ten thousand dollar increments. Most veterans, depending on the severity of their injuries and such from service, in many cases on the civilian market, aren't insurable. Or if they are, it's increasingly expensive, as, as you know, to, to cover those things. So VA has offered that. There are veterans that I encourage to try and take advantage of that. Basically, you pay in your policy. It goes into effect two years and one day for full coverage amount. So if something happens to the vet prior to that, they would get paid back the premiums they paid in plus interest. Other than that, two years plus one day, then they get the full face amount of it, it's ten, twenty, or forty thousand. So before, they didn't really have that option. When they were rated by VA, they did get a letter. They had twelve months to decide if they wanted disabled group life insurance. After that twelve month, it was off the table, so they couldn't go back and do that. So now they have an avenue where they can actually obtain that. There is an act called the Major Richard Starr Act. And this is legislation by our representatives to discuss with Congress. Again, going back to looking at veterans who are retired, either medically or through their tenure in service, and also disabled. Now, right now, they have concurrent receipt. If the veteran is fifty percent disabled and is a military retiree or medically retired, in many cases, they can receive both at that fifty percent rating or higher. If it's below that, there's an offset. So if they are rated at thirty percent, whatever that amount is, is deducted from their military retirement pay. Well, the Major Richard Starr Act is, is an act where they're trying to fix that, mainly because a lot of the veterans who are, are disabled and are not rated fifty percent or having difficulty trying to find meaningful and gainful employment. And so their, their disabilities are holding them back from being able to do that. So this act is seeking to rectify that and fix it. So I'll, I'll continue to track that and see where we go with that. But subject to your questions, that's all I have for my update for the month of January.
Any questions?
Sounds good.
All righty.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Thanks, Dan. Is Brittany coming in for the?
I don't think so. This is just an annual renewal. I don't think there's any changes.
Nothing changed? Do I have a motion to approve the liquor license for Spring Valley Golf Course? Jack?
I'll second.
Whacker? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. We're up to the Wellmark. Donna, you're up.
A well-being survey. In December, Wellmark was here, or, yeah, they were here and talked about different options for upcoming year. The employer health and well-being consultant talked quite extensively about employee well-being. They are wanting or would like to have you consider a workplace survey to evaluate what our employees' thoughts are on well-being. Phil's already bummed that he didn't get one. I said, we didn't get one because it hasn't been approved.
We're gonna let Phil fill it out.
So I'm not able to give you the full dynamics on how that would take place. Wellmark would prepare a line, timeline, communication material, and then get that to employees. They do say it's a value of twenty-five hundred. I'm assuming that they want us to look at other programs after that. Bringing it to your...
Do you know what's on the survey at all?
Questions on well-being. I mean, health, physical health, how to address it. No, I, the sample questions that they gave us were very generic. Surveys are what they're worth, but I think it's just something.
Yeah, my question is what value is there in doing a survey?
So I'm bringing it to you. I just keep on getting emails to that, from them. I guess it's in how you want to address your employees' input.
If they do it for no cost, I would imagine the questions are structured in a way that you'd get beneficial information. So I, I would see nothing wrong with doing it. I mean, you're not out anything. Worst case, if you don't get information that you think is valid or whatever, forget it.
Is that an online survey or paper survey or?
Well, we'll probably have to do a little bit of both. I don't know that we have the capability.
Who compiles it then, Wellmark?
I, well, yeah, they're, they have a whole team that's dedicated to well-being.
I guess I'd make a motion to approve doing the survey.
Motion by Stacker to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Whacker. Discussion?
No cost to it? No, it says no cost.
Not for the survey. Now, I'm assuming the results, they'll encourage us maybe to look at something. I, I can't guess what the survey's gonna show, so I can't tell you that. I mean, I'm just bringing it, they've, they've emailed me numerous times asking that we consider that.
Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor to accept to do the survey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Three to one. It passed.
Aflac is the next thing. Looking at open enrollment. The road crew has their safety meeting on the twenty-first of April, and then we're looking at May third for the rest of the employees. One of the consideration, the Aflac, I think, again, this is not coming from me, but it's what she had indicated that they, we could offer a dental coverage. We currently have dental, but like with Aflac, it's a supplement. There's an orthodontic addition to it. There is, the third plan does allow for up to two thousand dollars in expenditures. Aflac is all employee-paid, so I'm just bringing it to you to see if you want to add that to the menu of other Aflac policies that are offered.
That, that would have no cost to the county. It's just another option for employees to choose, right?
Right, yeah.
That's what I thought.
What's your thought? I mean, we have dental insurance already.
We do.
So if we lose people out of the dental plan we have now, does that raise the rate for the rest of them in it?
I can't answer that.
I'm just...
It, it should.
I don't know why, I don't know why it should. I don't know.
Because they, they, unless they have a minimum or something on it right now, which I've never heard, that shouldn't have an impact.
So Aflac would administer everything in it? Wouldn't dump it all on you to do anything?
No, they, she currently enrolls individuals. I provided an open enrollment, provided the information. I do some communication back and forth if somebody has a question, but I don't do anything for the application.
Okay.
I don't meet with the staff. I don't, again, this is not a, I'm bringing it to you, probably I'm being the middle person. Sharon Miller is our representative.
So I take it that at the four twenty-one, that she'll do a presentation to?
She'll do a presentation for the safety and then she'll be available the third. And then she usually comes back the following week to meet with staff if they actually are going to be applying. And she does that all on her own. She just sets up in a, oh, she set up an election center last year.
Think so.
Yeah. I know she did. She was there because that's, we went back in her notes and I've got all of that scheduled, so... Whether or not this is added or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's not gonna make any difference in her...
No, other than you have to decide if you want that on your menu. I don't know that it will change the complexion of anything you do or anything I do.
Should just give our employees another option, so I'd make a motion to approve adding it.
Mr. Specker makes a motion to add it to Aflac? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Whacker second. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Four to one.
Three to one. Did you say no?
No, I see. All, all.
Oh, sorry.
Unanimous.
I thought you said three.
Oh!
I thought you said four to one.
He said four to one.
That's what I thought you said.
I did.
Okay, good.
I did, I did, I did.
My brain's not malfunctioning.
No, I'm, yeah, well, four people voted. I'm so used to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks, Donna. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yeah, it could be worse. We are, we're gonna talk about the twenty-eighty agreement with workforce development. Kyle, is workforce development changing?
Yeah, so I've, I've mentioned this briefly in board updates before, but on the fifteenth last Wednesday, we had a meeting for our region. And the next day, on the sixteenth, North Central had a meeting with their region. And we had been in conversations about merging with them. But there is a meeting after the election. Probably sometime in November. If I, I'd have to go back in my notes, but there was a presentation down in Des Moines by Iowa Workforce Development. And, long story short, there was a whole new set of hoops for us to jump through. And it doesn't look like even with merging with the new region, that that will be enough to do what needs to be done. So there's been quite a lot, quite a few conversations around the state in regards to this topic. But Craig Anderson from Plymouth County had had a conversation with Michelle McNerney, the division administrator for IWD. And he said that was on Christmas Eve. And, long story short, that was not a good conversation. But he had requested their county attorney looks into... whether this was required to be part of this workforce development system, and the result that was found from that is no. So they had conversations, um, and Craig is Plymouth County, but he represents Western Iowa, eighteen counties in that region, and they looked into the possibilities of dissolving the twenty-eighty. So they had meetings with federal Department of Labor, state, IWD, and their staff and other, um, elected officials from their region, came up with the decision to dissolve their twenty-eighty. And, at the end of the day, what that does is, I mean, we're, we're kind of acting as the middleman between the federal programs that come down and the constituents that actually get the service right now. And there's a lot of tension between the state and local level, and right now, the way our twenty-eighty is written, we carry all the financial liability. If funds are misspent or anything of that regard. So, the summary is, by dissolving the twenty-eighty, we would get rid of the financial liability, but the programs would all remain the same, because it's a federal program. It will just be administered by a different entity. There's... I think three options Michelle had sent out in an email, um, previously about how that could look, but we have to make a decision to kind of let them know. So at our meeting on the fifteenth, out of the ten supervisors that represent the ten counties, it was unanimous to dissolve the twenty-eighty. North Central was unanimous the next day, and previous to that, Western Iowa, eighteen counties was unanimous as well, so.
I guess my question is who's accountable then? It's the supervisors or the counties are not accountable for all the money spent?
So, that would, the governor is technically the one that receives the grant at the state level. She designates the director of Iowa Workforce Development, Beth Thompson, to oversee the program. So, depending on which option is taken after this, um, another region could pick up that liability and oversee the, um, programs for our area, which... There's multiple ways to look at that. Um, so it could be another county, or it could be the state. But, it would, if we dissolve the twenty-eighty agreement, we would not have the financial liability anymore.
Well, but I always think you should have somebody that's accountable. Anytime you get federal or state dollars, it has to go to somebody that...
Somebody will be. It just wouldn't be us if we dissolve the twenty-eighty. And if any county in the region does not dissolve the twenty-eighty, then they could be responsible for everyone else in the region.
Why would a county want to take the responsibility of the other counties? That, that's been my question.
It, yeah, it's a good question, but, um, the, the fact of the matter is, until you have enough dollars as a pool to cover the ten percent for admin, um, for doing, having staff and all the things that are required, you don't really have an option until you get to that point. And at one point, the state was trying to force us to two regions in the entire state. It was, I mean, there's a lot, lot of history going back here, but currently, one, we're in nine regions right now prior to this discussion here. One of those regions takes forty-some percent of the state funding because of their unemployment levels. And with the way the program is structured, the low, record low unemployment we have now will drive our funding down even farther in the years to come. So it's, it's not financially going to work unless the counties are going to contribute money for admin costs or something like that, and none of us were willing to do that. So, really, it's between a rock and a hard place, but there's, there's no good option here.
So in other words, it's gonna, money's gonna go to Des Moines and, uh, Eastern Iowa, whatever the area.
No, cause they, they still have to have, I mean, there's local plan that's required. There's, there's all sorts of criteria for the federal program, so you have to show how you're, um, covering all these services. So no, it, it shouldn't just go to the major metropolitan areas. Um, but, like, Craig brought up, one of our points for fighting the realignment in the beginning was not losing the one-stop center in Spencer, cause that's our closest access point. Well, in Craig's region, um, they moved it from... What was it? From, now I'm not gonna be able to spit out the other name, from one place to Sheldon. And the county supervisors were never contacted. It was, IWD made the decision without talking to them at all. And that's, that's some of the communication issues we've been battling for the last four-plus years. My entire time on the board has been battling that, and if you talk to Tim Schumacher from Emmett or Berry or some of the other longer-term supervisors from over there, they'll say it's, it's been a constant circle of change, and the communication has been not good.
Well, I go, go back to one of the reasons I run for supervisor is cause I believe in home rule, and we are just going away from our, in this state, at a accelerated pace with everything, even down to our taxation. It's starting to irritate me. Cause home rule is very important.
And, and I agree with that, but the, the kicker with this is, and I, I asked a question of other supervisors as well, but I asked what portion of the program do we actually have control over? No one came up with an answer. I haven't found an answer in four years. Others that have been there longer haven't found an answer. So if I can't justify what portion of the programs we can actually make an impact on, I, I don't think there is one to be made.
Well, I think it's the right thing to dissolve the twenty-eighty agreement. I'm not arguing at all, but I think the program needs revision.
Oh, it, it definitely does, and I, I brought that up to Henry and Dave after the, um, legislative forum, which I'll talk on that later as well, but, um, the fact that there's thirty, or a third of the state roughly, that is dissolving the twenty-eighty, that, I believe that should send a message, and if it doesn't, that's on people at the state level, but, um, I, I think it, it should justify some significant changes. I don't know if that'll get accomplished, but nothing else we've done to this point has gotten the desired results, so. As, as Tim, Tim described it in our meeting, he said this is basically a vote of no confidence in the state, so.
I would make the motion to dissolve the twenty-eighty agreement with workforce development.
I'll, I'll second.
Whacter? Makes the second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four to zero. Unanimous. I forgot the one.
Is there anything Kyle that I need to do with that?
I don't know. I will, I'll get back to you on that, um...
Probably gonna have to send a letter to them saying you dissolved it.
Yeah, the minutes will be, the minutes showing the vote would be
Right.
critical, obviously, but we'll have that. That's wish. Um, there, there was talk about passing a resolution, which, and I could pull that up. I don't, I know it was sent in my email here.
We didn't vote on a resolution though. I, I would think if you send a minute to workforce development, it works to fight, wouldn't it?
Could, I mean, we could do a letter, you know, basically to them stating that we as the board of supervisors of Sioux County have voted unanimously, unanimously to dissolve the twenty-eighty agreement. Just an official letter to them and...
With a copy of the minutes.
Yep, yep.
So...
I think we should ask Todd, we do, you, cause twenty-eighty agreements are filed with the state.
Yeah, and...
I think we need to check with Todd to figure out what we need to do.
So there, and yeah, there is, and I have, I can show this resolution to Todd. This might be something we would need to pass next week or something, but at least we have the direction now, and it's been explained, so that's fine.
Okay.
Um, but this does say, county, um, previously signed a resolution to, um, which some of, now this might already be tweaked to ours. Yeah, I'll, it's been kind of crazy here this last week, so I'll get this to Todd, and if he, if he feels there's anything extra, we may put it on the agenda for next week for a resolution.
One person happy?
Okay.
But...
Well, you'll let me know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be in contact with you.
Yeah, cause it's about with the recorder and the state, so I wanna make sure that we take care of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda. Phil, you're a credit card.
Yeah, I put that back on the agenda because, um, we discussed last week with being the restrictions that was put on the card of, was just fuel and lodging for the ones that are in the vehicles. I need to add into that, um, county-related vehicle expenses, because if we're somewhere blowing tire, uh, need a jump start, dead battery, something like that down in Iowa City, we have the ability to get back on the road again. Um, I, I understand the part, you know, discussing as far as no food, so I went ahead and typed up a EMS guideline, uh, which I put right on there. It's in addition to the county credit card policy, which also included a copy of the county credit card policy in there, so I guess just some clarification on how we want to, um, to do that, but I think that county-related vehicle thing is, is important for out on the road, away from the area. And I didn't think of that last week. We're talking about the fuel and lodging.
Yeah, it makes sense to have that in there.
And then I also had in there a little difference on the credit card that I have, a few extra things, you know, as far as supplies and equipment that we don't have with some companies that we're not, unable to have contract or, or have accounts with. We have a couple of those. Um, not something that happens real regularly, but there's a couple that we do not have accounts with. And one's occasionally, I will buy some from Amazon. That's one.
I guess my question would be, why are we making a policy on top of what we already have? I mean, it, our current one already says not for cash advances, alcoholic beverages, tobacco products, meals or food, so that's already included in there. Specifically says it should be for county business expense only. Violations may result in disciplinary action, all that stuff, and it says it's limited to the following purposes. Hotel motel, guaranteed reservations, vehicle expenses, registration fees, airlines, car rental, department expenses that require a government credit card, prisoner meal expense during transport. So I think all that's spelled out fairly clearly there.
The only advantage would be is the credit cards that the staff will have access to that's in the vehicles. Those cards would have specific limitations. I don't know where they would use them other than that anyway. It's just if we want to limit them on what specifically they can use it for.
So you're basically just adopting what the county policies on credit cards, but just adding?
He's already, he's already under the county policy as, as any employee.
That was kind of my intent last week, but you have the discussion last week with limitations on, on the ones in the vehicles. I went ahead and put together limitations, so I'm fine either way. I just wanna make sure we're able to cover the vehicle expenses.
His policy does say including food for event, um, which our policy says no food, and our auditing firm will not like any kind of food on the credit card.
So if you buy food, you're gonna have to get it reimbursed.
So, as long as we approve food on the agenda for a training session, that's what we've done the last two years.
We did the public for...
But it shouldn't be on the credit card, though. He can still purchase it, and it can be allowed, but not on the credit card.
Right.
Okay.
It can be refunded, but it's gonna be a, a special, go through the monthly claims.
Or charge it to wherever you're getting the food and have them bill us directly.
I guess, I would say just use a county credit card policy.
Yeah, I wanna get rid of policies that don't match. I agree with that.
I'd make a motion to use the county credit card policy alone, or strictly the county credit card policy for EMS.
Yes. I'll second that. Any discussion? Everybody understand the motion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four. Unanimous.
The next one is approval to sign the, uh, hospital contract, which is the extension of one year, uh, at the full rate for the first quarter and a fifty percent rate for the remainder of the year. Same one that you and I discussed, the same one that you and I discussed with the hospitals, so nothing has changed there. Just a matter of getting it signed and, and approved on both sides.
Motion?
Sure.
Or do you want to take it back to the, we shouldn't have to take it back, the, the advisory just said, you know, whatever that we come up with, if we, they were aware of this contract, if we made any changes for the better, they were okay with that, which we didn't, so.
It is, I'm just curious why the rate drops after the quarter.
Well, we, we have a motion on the floor. We should have a second and then discussion
Oh.
to be technical.
Yeah, I'll second it, so we can have discussion. No?
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious as to why the, the rate drop on, you know...
So two, two years ago, we wrote this agreement with the hospitals, a way to help us jumpstart to get some money going. The hospital, the way they're structured, is unable to tax for EMS. So they have, they can only use revenues for EMS. They can't use tax dollars for EMS. Um, this is all they're willing to do going forward for one more year, and after that, they say they're not gonna give us anything. We still, we still can charge for our services through the hospital for, for insurance and Medicare, Medicaid. We still get reimbursed for those. This was just extra on top. Um, they're willing to revisit it, six months down the road and see where, where we're at.
Okay, so there is a chance for, to increase, decrease again, so.
I would say slim, but there's a chance.
Okay, okay.
So, and I'm, I'm not entirely satisfied with this by any means, as Phil knows, but, um...
I don't think anyone's are, or the board is, but...
Yeah, so the thing, the thing they had said is that their attorney considers it double taxation to use funds from, to pay for EMS. I, I don't necessarily agree with that, but, um...
Yeah, cause they're not using tax dollars to pay for it.
Well, exactly.
It's coming out of their operating funds, so how can you say that if they're not using tax dollars?
So when we met with them, when Roger and I met with them, that was in December, I believe, and they said in November, their operating was in red. And when Kyle and I met with them, they said November and December were both in red, so they have no revenue to give us.
But, anyone that runs a business...
My comment back was, that's how you do accounting.
If they would have filed under, not under three forty-one C or whatever, instead of A, they would have had a different approach to how they use tax dollars.
Right.
That's, that's the problem is how they were originally structured.
There's three hos, there's three hospitals in the state of Iowa that are structured the way that Sioux's regional is.
Correct.
All the rest aren't.
And, and the biggest portion of this agreement was to bridge that transition from what we had three, four years ago to what we were going towards. So I mean, that, it was, it was a Band-Aid. I would have... I mean, I still think the hospitals should have some skin in the game as far as this goes, but they did have a offer from another, EMS provider that offered to take all their transfers, um, at no charge to the hospital, so, until... until, until their options decrease, our options are relatively low as well, because you take away the transfers, you take away income as well too, so there, there's two sides to the equation there, it's.
It's a great revenue stream for the ambulance service, so.
We're just gonna have, you know, when we get our final blood and meat out and we know what we can do for staffing and stuff, we're just gonna have to, you know, take a serious look at how we're providing coverage in the county and if they're not willing to step up and fund a person, then there's no guarantee that we're gonna be available right away to take a transfer, we gotta make sure the county's covered first.
Yeah, so when Phil and I were. Yeah, and that was, that was one of the things I discussed with Phil was different um staffing options and timeframes as far as response and we discussed that with DAR as well too, to get a feel for their expectations and everything and I think we have some options moving forward in that regard, but as far as this agreement, I think this is the best we're gonna get for now.
Yeah, well, and we're gonna have a year to work things out and see what, if we can make it better or
Right.
or what, how we can work together better.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, it sets the stage to start at least a good conversation with them and do our due diligence to.
Cause originally, originally, Jul- June thirtieth was the end.
Right.
So this is at least better than what we had a few months ago.
Yep.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor, any more discussion? Hearing, now all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, unanimous. You're still up.
Last one I have is just a, a renewal of our medical director agreement um. And the form that they typed up is just a one-page extension of the current contract, it's, it's with the same doctor, Dr. Lampy is our medical director for the county as a whole. It's just a two-year extension of that agreement, it's, the first two years of that agreement is, is ending, and this is just a two-year extension.
So the original agreement, is that the line where it says the parties agreed to the following amendment to the emergency medical services, medical director agreement with the commencement date of March one, twenty twenty? Is that the correct date that's supposed to be in there, is that supposed to read further out?
It's, it's re- it's replacing, it's replacing the prior agreement, so that is referencing when the other.
Okay, so that's the original agreement date.
And the number.
Yep, that's.
One says to extend it by a period of two years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I was just a little confused as to why the twenty twenty was there, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like a.
Yeah, the, the other confusing piece for you is the original one's not in here.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it, this is an extension.
And I could get you a copy, I just didn't dig it up.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that it was, you know, purposely that date.
The first one might have been, first one might have been a three-year contract, I'm not real positive, being this twenty twenty-three, it might have been a three-year. The original one, this is a two-year extension.
You don't have the contract with you?
No.
Okay. So, so our motion to approve would have to also include a motion for the chairman of the board to sign it.
Well, there's a thing here for you to sign.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know. So we do have something to sign?
Yeah.
So, we are good. Do I have a motion to approve the MS director agreement?
I'll make that one.
Motion by Wactor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Plough. Any more discussion?
I did.
I see Jack raised his hand.
Sorry.
I don't care.
Doesn't matter whoever wants to be second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, unanimous, and I have a paper too.
So back on that, one with the hospital for the, that's signed by Dar Albert. And she just has on here her place for me to sign, she doesn't have the board signature or, or someone to attest to the signature. Do you want this changed, or are you okay if I just sign this?
I think the board should sign, the chairman should sign it.
Well, is that, is that you or EMS board?
Just says Cassup got EMS, period, EMS system.
Hmm, yeah, it probably should be the board.
Being, beings that we're supposed to oversee it, I think it would be appropriate to have.
So do you want to change this or just sign this?
We could probably just sign it.
We can sign it.
Sign, sign if you sign it, but I think the chairman of the board should.
What do you want?
Where do you want it signed at? Excuse EMS system, you want me to sign it underneath and stamp it?
But you sign right on the lines, I don't care.
Why don't I stamp it, the date, and then I'll sign underneath like I do anything else?
Yeah.
And then you can sign it as EMS director.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
It's all I have, hopefully for a couple of weeks. Our next advisory board's coming up on the seventh of March, so our non-advisor board, the advisor council now.
Yeah, it's not a board, that's illegal.
Yeah. Hey, thank you.
Do you want this one, Phil?
Do you want two copies, Phil?
From the other people, a- after you have everybody else sign it.
Then I'll get a copy back to you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Phil.
Thanks.
Thanks.
We are up to decision to approve the payment for the retainage on the courthouse roof project. And Tammy, you have all the information in the folder.
Yeah, and I, Will is on vacation, so he's not here to talk to you guys today, but I did talk to him. Um, and he said, um although they haven't completed the walkthrough because it's winter and but everything is good, he sees no reason why the retainage cannot be paid.
Anybody have?
Are you here for this roof stuff or something else?
Anybody have any questions on the roof?
I guess, one of the things I was gonna ask was, what was the date it was supposed to be completed? Cause I didn't, I didn't necessarily see that in here.
October eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
For the project completion?
Well, that's what it says, date of substantial completion.
Well, yeah, but when was it supposed to be completed versus when was it?
I'd have to grab the um contract and see if there, see what the.
Cause I, I feel like from our conversations, it was discussed how late it was many times and um I know this is dated months ago, but if it was, if it was not completed till after the project date, there should be damages in there somewhere.
I think part of it was not being able to get some of the supplies.
Yeah.
And that's still part of the contract.
Well, but.
Yeah, cause we didn't, we didn't give them any extra time in a change order.
They're gonna claim a force to mirror on you, and you'll pay it anyhow.
Unless they got a letter from the company, that'd be hard to do.
Well, they explained it, that they were having trouble getting enough supplies to complete it, and they didn't want to start until they had everything to complete it, so. We didn't get it in writing, but we had it in a verbal.
My next question on that though too is, are they still gonna come do the walk? What guarantees that though? Cause if we pay them this, then they just, well, you proved it without the walkthrough, so. Let's uh make sure that they come do the walkthrough, check.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would rather do this all after questions are answered and it's a hundred percent complete.
So what was your conversation with them?
Well, it is complete, it's just, the project is completely complete, it's just Willie hasn't done the walkthrough with them, he's done it on his own. But um, that's completely up to you. And the reason that they haven't is because it's been winter and snowy and not everything's melted and you don't wanna do it with the weather conditions and, or the weather conditions.
My problem is if we pay this and they basically close the folder on it and say it's done, then when the snow does melt, we discover an issue, you know, what's? Are they gonna come back and fix it or?
There's, it looked like there was warranty paperwork in there.
And then we had an architecture hired to oversee the project, so actually some of that's on him if it's not done correctly.
Well, it is, but it was signed by the contractor on nine nineteen, signed by the architect on eleven-two. And here we are, two twenty-one, it's finally coming to us, so that leaves a lot of questions in my mind.
Does Willie have any contact with the architecture?
I do not know.
I'm going to uh say that I'd be, that Willie should uh get in contact with the architecture firm that we hired to see if the work was done appropriately and then put it back on the agenda. Is that fair with everybody?
Yeah, I'd agree with that, and I'd also like, I mean, whenever you get a chance to look up that contract, I'd like to see the completion date and stuff.
Completion.
Yeah, or when it was supposed to be completed.
And if we are going to pay this, I'd like to see at least some sort of agreement with the company that they'll still come do the walkthrough. Because I, I just, me personally, I don't feel comfortable with paying it and then they never come do the walkthrough, so.
I'm, I'm assuming that the architecture is supposed, architectural firm is supposed to be here in the walkthrough? Or at least available?
Hmm, yeah, you would assume so.
I would think.
Should be standard.
Questions for Willie, I guess.
Do you wanna make that as a motion, Roger, or?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it. Just Tammy, Tammy had asked for you to repeat what you.
Oh, that we delay the approval of this uh certificate of payment for a week until we get in touch with the architectural firm to make sure that all the work was done properly.
Will, Willie's on vacation, so.
Probably, probably don't, don't specify the timeline, just, just leave the timeline off, let it, let him get in contact and put it back on when it's ready.
And an agreement with the firm that did the project that they will be available for a walkthrough with the architect and Willie. Is that satisfactory?
Yeah.
Everybody understand the motion? Do I have a second? I didn't know who did it.
Yeah.
You're good.
Okay, then, I don't know difference between hands and, and voice. I have a motion and a second on the floor, does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried, unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, the next one.
I think we're gonna have to postpone this one because I had um Melissa Leo from Care Connections um had suggested that we go into a contract with Winnebago County to share their advocate since we have not been able to get one. We don't even have any applications and it's been on the paper for months. Um, so she had sent an email to them and encouraged us to reach out, so I did reach out to Winnebago County to see if their um advocate um would be able to. Um, I have not heard anything back from the advocate, from the county supervisors or from the auditor. So I think we're gonna need to postpone until I hear something back.
Yeah.
Um, you, you're still putting ads in the paper?
I guess, I don't know if uh Danny's still putting ads in or not, she's been taking care of that for a bit, so.
To comply with the state regulations, we have to keep putting ads in, if we don't have one, so it'd be good if you ask her.
Yeah, um, did Melissa send this like um agreement or?
Yeah, the agreement's from Melissa, yes.
Okay, I was just curious.
Um, and I was gonna look, did she um copy you guys in the emails at all?
No.
Alright, so um. She sent the email to Carla Weiss, who's the auditor of Winnebago County, Bill Jensen, I guess Carter, me and Barry Anderson. Um, and I, and then I sent an email out and I haven't heard back from anybody, so I will
Try.
try to follow up, and I'll follow up with Melissa, see if she's heard anything, um, and then go with me.
Yeah. Sounds good, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Kyle, you have discussion, decision, planning and zoning?
Yeah, with the way everything went time-wise this last week and Monday being a holiday, I didn't get all the information I was looking for figured out for this, but just trying to look at other options yet, so.
Did you get the survey I sent?
Um, yeah, I was looking at that, I haven't looked at it recently, cause I know you'd said it could be updated, but I checked it a couple of days later and that was good information.
The point of the, or the conclusion is, everybody doesn't act differently, it's, it's all over the place.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of different options.
It almost seemed like more were with the Samterians.
There, there was definitely a chunk of them that were.
Yep, yep.
Well, about half is, has their own department.
And some, yeah, some. Some have their own.
Yeah, I did, I didn't know how that was.
Yeah, that's surprising.
So yeah, it's good information to look at, thanks.
So.
So I would, I don't know, put it on for another week or two, you know. That, that would last you two weeks, just because.
Yeah, do it two weeks, that'd give you some time.
Yeah, this last week was nuts.
The hearing is next Monday, isn't it?
Joe?
Which hearing?
The planning and zoning is the twenty-seventh, yes.
Yeah.
But that's for the carbon pipe.
That'd be Monday night, but, and that, yeah, so yeah, two weeks would be fine.
The hearing of planning and zoning?
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking it'd probably be a good idea to wait until after that to.
Well, I don't know what you're planning on changing on it, but it's, it always takes time to get everything.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change over immediately, no matter what was decided.
Right.
It takes a lot of time.
Yeah. Probably be a several month process.
We have no instruction in the right of way, I stopped down and talked to Doug.
Yeah, he's gone.
I talked to the other Doug.
Oh.
We got two Dugs.
Yes, we do.
Is Doug Crouch coming up for discussion or anything, or he not having anything?
He didn't have anything, so.
Okay.
Nothing with the engineer or zoning administrator?
Okay.
So we are up to discussing with our auditor, and, did you have anything?
I'm just here to listen. So I don't have to be part of the meeting, my name's Will Heather, I'm with, uh working with Navigator.
Oh.
Um, so I'm just here to, A, get a feel of what the heck goes on up here, cause I'm brand new to the team, but B, just wanna get my discus. I, okay, they have a lot, this needs to be a wild conversation.
When you, when you said that, I recognized your name, so we've had phone calls and emails and stuff, but.
We're gonna be up here next Monday, I imagine.
Okay, well, Tammy, you're up.
Okay, so um first Governor Reynolds signed Senate file one eighty-one yesterday, so that is officially a bill this morning. A bill, this morning already at seven thirty, we get emails from the Department of Revenue and the Department of Management with the correct rollbacks. Or assessment limitations, whatever you wanna call them. Um so I talked to Christie this morning, she's starting valuations. This morning, right now, without me, and then I'll join her when we're done with the board meeting. And um then we will hopefully in the next couple days get our valuations redone, our tips redone. And then send out all the information to the cities. Um and then we will be able to get our budgets updated and figure out where we're sitting. I'm hoping um we can get all that done and maybe have a budget, talk about the budget. Um Friday afternoon, if that works for everybody. We have a busy schedule this week because tomorrow we have election worker training for our special election on March seventh. And then Friday morning, we have a public test for our election equipment, so um. Our schedule has a lot going on without having to redo that too, but I'm hoping that we can get that done, um. So I will be in contact with you guys later today or tomorrow morning to see if that works for everybody to come in on Friday afternoon.
Would it work better for you to wait until next Tuesday?
I don't want to because I gotta do the budget and I gotta start getting it, but it takes me quite a long time to get all the numbers in the Department of Management. And get them balanced without worries, so.
That's why I didn't want you to be rushed.
Yeah, I know, um so I need time, once you guys look at it, to get all that done.
Okay.
Cause I need you guys to look at it first, make sure levy rates are.
It was in your area, but I took care of it.
Make sure the levy rates are where you at them before I put them in the Department of Management system, that comes after you guys.
I guess I'll be fine up in my area, so.
Okay, okay, so I'll, I'll look at, see where we get um today and tomorrow and then go from there. The weather could also be a factor, so we'll see what the weather brings to.
Just come in, get snow in, get some work done.
Yeah, exactly, so also um the auditing firm Gardner Company is here this week, um doing our yearly audit. They came yesterday, which was kinda nice because there was nobody else here except for us.
Mine is, it's gotta be right on the line.
No, it'd be in yours pretty good.
Would it?
Sorry, I probably missed some of that.
That's okay, um.
Any big highlights?
Um, I don't know, but I said now.
Well, you said quite a bit. Basically talking the timeline, getting things done, and how the weather could affect that, but we'll look at Friday afternoon, so.
The auditing firm is here this week, they started yesterday, um. The courthouse was closed yesterday, except for our office, we were open for, yesterday was the last day to ask for an application. Um for an absentee ballot, so um we were here till five o'clock last night and the auditing firm was able to come yesterday and get some stuff done without. We need to have to get the courthouse, so that worked good, and they will be here the whole week this week. They're set up in the um old boardroom, so if you wanna go in and say hi, they're in there um working getting our audit done. Um I did hear yesterday, uh Senate Study Bill Eleven Twenty-Four is still being debated um. In the legislature, but they have changed it, it will not be effective this year twenty-four. So we don't have to worry about that taking effect this year, so it's still going forward, but it will not affect the year we're working on currently. So that is a relief, um there are still, I still have several concerns with this bill.
Yeah.
Um so um. I, I hope you have a chance to look at it and speak to people about your concerns. I did forward you this, this morning, a worksheet that I sat, put together of how it's gonna affect each county financially. So if you have a chance to look at that worksheet, please do, um that kinda talks about it a little bit, um cause it does affect growth. So it limits our, it limits it, so um. Let's see, what else do I have, um like I said, we have training tomorrow, public test Friday, um busy week. Next week, then um. We'll be get, getting everything ready for the election on March seventh, so we'll be delivering equipment March sixth, pick, picking up equipment March eighth. Um and getting everything sent out to the state. Uh we did have some people come in yesterday, cause I saw the signs outside that said come in to vote and they uh were in the wrong district. So it does only affect those people that are in the North Union and North Cassis, North Cassis School Districts. Um if you have any questions about that, those are the only people, people that it does affect, so. And then I think that that is all I have.
We'll go back to your eleven twenty-four, uh Lacter and Specter and I were all at the meeting Saturday morning.
Legislative forum, yes.
And we expressed our concerns with one eighty-one and eleven twenty-four. And basically, they, they agreed that it was too late to implement this year.
Yeah, and I just pulled up this um fiscal impact sheet, it looks like. Is there really only three counties that it would affect with a loss?
No, no, it affects just by everyone.
Everybody.
Well, column F has revenue loss or gain, everything is blank except three.
Are you looking in rural or?
Yeah.
You can't go in rural, basically.
Gotta look.
Oh, I just saw the tab for general here.
No, you gotta go back to general, basically.
I don't know, doesn't have anything for us on general either.
Well, it lowered the valuation by, from one eighty-one to one seventy, or one seven hundred. No growth. Percent change is five point eight seven percent on valuation.
No, that's Kioka, um we're six point nine five value change.
Yeah, we are, I'm online off.
Yeah, I had, I highlighted, I highlighted mine, so you can see across there, but. Oh, on the, so.
Computer away and get one I can highlight with.
So on the left side, it has nothing, but on the right side, it has a loss of two hundred thousand for the growth limitation.
Two hundred thousand for the growth, yeah.
Rural, let me go back to the other tab. Oh, that's got a hundred and four thousand loss for the growth limitation there too.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, it does.
Yeah, six point nine percent's a lot.
I was trying to sort through the, the columns and everything here real quick, but yeah, it's got.
Really, it don't affect rural basic, except in some of the small counties. With no evaluation.
The only way that it will affect us um tremendously is if our, cause right now we're way below the maximum. The maximum's three point nine five percent, which some people are at that, we are way below that, we are one point four four, I believe, so um. That isn't really gonna affect us.
Yeah, very few counties max out their rural basic.
Yeah, well.
We are maxed.
And yeah, Roger, like Roger mentioned, we had the legislative forum on Saturday, um and. We both said stuff during the discussion, during questions and afterwards, um. Josh and I stuck around for a while afterwards, but I had to talk to Henry and Dave about this, each indiv- individually. And then I talked to them both about workforce um together at the end, but I think. From the discussions there, there's quite a, quite a ways for it to go before it actually gets done, so they're, they're open for input and suggestions, so. Now would be a good time to be communicating those.
Dave's wife is the treasurer for O'Brien County.
Oh.
Yeah, she's treasurer.
So she, she was very.
She, she knows.
Informed on how county budgets work.
Yeah, I've had, I've had several conversations with both of them, she's, she, she keeps him informed of the county side of things very closely. And that's a huge benefit to us.
Yeah, she was very intelligent in how the budget worked and we had a good conversation.
Yo. So.
And she's been straightening Dave out.
She'll keep him in line, he's not too far out.
Nah, he's not out, he's, he's doing a good job, both of them are.
So, and I don't know that that worksheet tells the whole story either, because it's, it doesn't talk about losing. Our supplemental levy for general leasing, so, or for general, so. That is not reflected in that worksheet that I can show, and that's where we'll be cut back, is if we only have a three point five and lose our supplemental, that is gonna hurt us.
Well, how can you lose supplemental, this is what I'm having a little bit of a hard time with.
Um well, they're putting a max, it's just gonna be one general levy of three point five.
You're gonna get rid of the two and combine them together into just a general.
Yeah, so we will have a three point five and a one point four four, we'll only have a three point five except for um. What did they change the wording now, it was one thing and now they changed it to disa- natural disasters or some kind of disasters. And courthouse, um.
Yeah, and I kinda.
Courtroom.
I kinda laughed, I heard, or I don't know if I had heard or if I had pulled up the bill and looked, that Farm Bureau was one that was supporting this. And I don't have any idea why Farm Bureau in this county in particular would support it. Because if we take it off general basic taxes, if you put the same dollars on rural, every farmer's taxes are going up.
Yep.
It's counterintuitive, it's counterproductive.
Right.
Yep, it is.
But I don't think people understand how the budget works, and I think even some of the legislators at the state level don't understand it correctly and. Um I'm glad there's a lot of people that have been talking about it, we watched um the debate yesterday and um. And the time before, and there are a lot of county officials that are talking to them, and they are talking to county officials too, which is good. Because they can give them information that they don't already have, so.
Yeah, and I mean, I had conversations with Dave even while I was out in DC, um and then to Scooth, um. Because it was on the senate side of things, and I'd anticipated dealing with Henry and others on the house side. After I got back and stuff, which is obviously in the process now, but I mean, there's. They both said there's a lot of conversation about this one, it's, it's night and day compared to one eighty-one and they thought that was a lot, so.
Well.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's good reason for it.
When I talked to Goof and a couple of the other ones, they, they didn't really realize that we only get sixteen to eighteen percent of the dollars from cities. I said you could take all.
From your property taxes, where a small portion of the.
I, I said you could take all the county share of the property tax that the cities collect.
Yeah.
And you, you're still only getting sixteen percent reduction, so tell me how you're gonna save all this money?
Yeah, the majority, the majority of the pie is in other hands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it.
And I, I shared that with both Henry and Dave as well afterwards, so.
I think all of us here, everybody in general is, wants to lower property taxes, nobody wants to pay more than they have.
But if you don't.
But at what cost, you know, we still have to be able to run the county and that's a concern.
Well, it's, it's providing a service, it's not a operation to make money, it's providing a service. So if you're providing a service responsibly, that's the best you can do.
But they're not touching fifty-eight to sixty percent.
Schools, they're not touching the cities, they're not touching the colleges.
Not touching the colleges, not touching the hospitals, they're sixty-seven percent of our budget.
Or more?
Yep, so, okay, we got thirty-eight percent left that, you know, that the rural can be affected, so what are we gonna do? Cut everything out of the rural?
Yeah.
I don't, they're not looking at it holistically.
No, and I, I made that point with those two as well, but it'll get farther.
A lot of it is, is public knowledge too, people don't know what they're voting for, I mean, people hear. Oh, lower taxes, hey, I'm for that, they don't see what, what impact that's gonna have on the county.
Right.
And I think, you know, if you do them to get that information out there and. To have people learn about how county budgets work and stuff like that.
Good idea, I guess.
Well, and the other thing is I, I, we didn't plow snow at Christmas time in the north part of the county and my phone run off.
Yeah.
Off the wall there on Christmas Day. Where's everybody at, so people expect a lot more than they used to. I'm, I'm gonna say that people are more demanding on getting the roads plowed than they were fifty years ago because.
Travel more than they did fifty years ago.
People are on the move more. So, yeah.
That, that and back in the day, people were more friendly to help out their neighbor and scoop their road and stuff like that without complaining or anything, so. I mean, there's some of that there too.
It, it wasn't as much Christmas Day, I think everyone understood that it was Christmas Day and they spent it with their families. If they were gonna go somewhere, most either knew that it would be questionable conditions or they were there ahead of time. It was the day after Christmas that upset everyone. They were back in travel mode again and.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I had enough people complain they couldn't get out Christmas Day. But, board reports, Jack, do you have anything?
Uh yeah, we had the uh Board of Health meeting, um I guess we talked about the Board of Health. Uh sending letters to the board supervisors, of course, the pipeline. Um Dr. Van Tager was very outspoken about not taking. Uh sides or, you know, uh saying anything about. You know, not, like, like not being, not supporting it or, or not being for it either way. Just staying with ideas about safety and, and, you know, about health and things like that. So the one thing she was concerned, she wanted, wanted us to get back, take back, and we couldn't vote on it because we didn't have the power, so. We'll have to do it the next week, but. Um one thing uh she wanted, you know, clarification on is, you know, the, the uh separation distances from residences. I have the one letter we had there, it's seven thousand feet, she just wanted to work the board, you know, would like to see a map.
Well, we started with bigger separation distances in our ordinance that we haven't passed yet.
But so she'd like to get some clarification on that, maybe, you know, she, and she'd like to have some science behind, you know, uh the separation distance. You know, why a thousand? I said, well, they, they did, they did um talk about that at the, you know, the last meeting, they talked about, you know, how, how many feet it. Uh the gas would dissipate uh if there wasn't a leak. I think they were, they talked like three hundred fifty feet. So that was, that was the set at that last meeting about dispensation of the gas. But, so anyways, she, I guess I need to know, we have to get, get some direction from the board, what, what I should take back to them. Put in there as far as uh separation distances and, and. The one letter, you know, exactly, that was primarily about, you know, uh safety, uh you know, not, nothing about. Being for or against it, but rather just looking at the overall health, you know, the dangers of, of the gage, there was a leak and. One of those issues, of course, is that separation distance, so maybe the kind, let, let them know what we would like to, what we'd like to see. As far as that separation distance to kind of correct size of our ordinance and.
Well, I don't, I don't even have the number that's supposed to be in our ordinance off the top of my head, but that was, that was one of my concerns from the beginning. Is having science and facts behind that, and I know when Shelby County did their ordinance, they had their board help do something. I think they passed a resolution or whatever, but the structure of it maybe doesn't matter. But it was a very lengthy process, it was intensive and it, it all lined up together, so I think that's the right direction. But I don't, I don't think we had that direction from the beginning, it was just throwing numbers at the wall and. That's, I guess my opinion, that's not gonna hold up in any court, and um. So I, I don't know what to tell you in that regard, but um I know there's been discussions about plume studies and all that stuff, I. I haven't gotten into all the weeds of that, but one of the arguments of our attorney was. That the federal government regulates safety, but they leave citing up to the locals. But then he filed that up by saying, so his, his argument for us is that we can um. Cite it based on safety concerns. And I, I, I don't really know how you can do that, but I, I don't know, that's.
Well, safety is the only hammer we have.
Well, it's, it's different in the code of Iowa, because yes, three thirty-one, we're supposed to look out for the health, safety, welfare, all that. Um but when this specific project is governed by state and federal regulations that's super. Um, but when this specific project is governed by state and federal regulations that supersede that. You get into a different, different category there, so. I don't, I don't know what to tell you.
Like I said, I mean, Van Tager's, basically, she just didn't want to throw a number out there without.
I fully agree with that.
Having, you know, something to base it on, and then on example.
Well, we don't have anything yet.
Yeah, so anyway, um, we get, we get, we get to a goal because we get one, we get to have a corner. And they want some clarification as far as, you know, what, what kind of a number. Is gonna be safe, you know.
Roger, do you know what number was even put in our ordinance, was it a thousand feet?
It's a thousand feet.
I think that's what it was.
Uh, we just talked about that because um, we got an email from. Um. Carter had gotten a call from a constituent who was concerned that there was uh. Conflicting information and so we looked at it and sent it to, to Tim as well, um. And, let's see here. On page four, under the Board of Health, it says a thousand feet for all residents until an updated emergency plan is approved. On page eleven, it says a half mile from any occupied structure, so we asked for um. Clarification on that and he did send a clarification on that, um. Explaining that, so.
Well, the proposed pipeline is close to. Houses in Irvington, there's less than half a mile.
So, do you want me to tell you what he's, his answer was?
If, if he got it.
Yeah, he said the reference on page four in the whereas clauses is a legislative fl- finding or a statement of facts or authority. That support the ordinance being adopted, the clause notes that the BOH recommends pipelines be kept at at least a thousand feet from all residences. That should be interpreted, interpreted as their assessment of the minimum safe distance. The actual setback the ordinance is setting is a half a mile, which is at least a thousand feet. There's no conflict as the ordinance is basically just being more conservative than the minimum recommendation. In other words, despite the reference to a thousand feet on page four, the setback is being set at half a mile, so the setback is a, is a half a mile. Not a thousand feet.
So, how is that not conflicting with itself?
Because it doesn't have, because it's more than a thousand feet. It has to be at least a thousand.
Okay, so they're saying, it's saying the Board of Health is recommending at least a thousand and the ordinance is going above that. Okay.
But, we're in court right now in two different counties contesting the half mile.
Yep.
So, ours, our setback is, is a half a mile, not a thousand feet.
Yep.
The Board of Health says at least a half.
Shelby County is, but what's the other county?
Story.
Story?
Ames area, yep.
Yep.
So, anyway, just need to give some direction as far as.
Yep, I don't think we can until we actually have those hearings in, what is it, March?
But isn't, isn't that what the planning and zoning is?
February twenty-seventh.
Oh, February twenty-seventh, we're planning and zoning meets and we can actually give them the number.
Yeah, February twenty-seventh, five o'clock in here.
That's, that's kind of backwards from how Shelby County did it and that was one of my points, I mean, all these. All these pieces of the puzzle were put together before they did their ordinance, uh, after.
Well, I mean, I, I guess the point is, you know, Van Tager, probably what she said, she just wants to have a number that reflects. Uh, whether the science or, or good, good information that.
Right.
If there is a, if there is a pipeline break, this gas will be safe, it will be safe. To be in, in the vicinity of your. You know, eight hundred feet away from the break or a thousand feet away or whatever.
So, that's.
Anything closer than that, you know, could, could lead to, to death or injury.
I, I believe I heard last week when Son was talking, they, did they say that have plume studies done, but they would not release them?
Correct. That's what this is.
He was, he did give them some information about in, in, in the length of time when the parts were made or whatever. Were low enough, you know, to be, be there and I. Can't remember how much time he said it was or what the, how many feet away from the break that was.
Okay.
He did give some information about that.
Well, I mean, that's.
That's word of mouth, we need something a little bit more.
I mean.
I can tell you what the navigator numbers are, it's three hundred and fifty meters in five minutes. And meters, I would say that equates to about a thousand one hundred feet, I'd say, is about what breathable distance it is and. How long it takes before you overturn the law.
You said three hundred and fifty meters in how long?
About five minutes, three hundred seconds. They're, they've got a study that I can't email to y'all, which they did from some Great Britain tests. Where they blew up a segment of pipeline, we were supposed to have a meeting in late January, we're gonna get, ask to do the budget stuff, but that was also.
Yeah, it does, they had a hearing on that.
Can you just send it to me, I'll share.
Well, yeah, well, so I also want to come ready to start figuring out, I know now this budget stuff is gonna be screwed up, your schedule's even more, but. Start setting up something virtual for the next couple of weeks, so y'all could get this information from them, but they pressurized up a big. Five hundred foot set of pipe to the equivalent of eight miles, blew it in half, and they set out all these sensors, a hundred, fifty meter intervals down the ground and up in the air. And what they found was, you're in three hundred meters for about five minutes, that's a lot of CO2, a lot of oxygen in that environment. But after about five minutes with less than favorable conditions, it was a kind of cool day, maybe five miles an hour winds. That CO2 had dispersed back to the point where people could breathe. Longer than five minutes, I wanna say about ten minutes is where it was normal, five minutes, I wanna say you're still gonna get maybe lightheaded or nauseous if you're working in that environment, but. For the most part, after about five minutes, it's pretty much gone. At least that's what, that's the product they're selling, what information they provided to me.
Would, would it make a lot of difference on the size of the pipe though?
Yep, so it's all about distances and how much is actually getting up out of it, if it ruptures. That's what they're ironing out right now, what their mainline valve spacing is, so what the actual, actual distances and how much you get up in the air. Average, they're floating out, I wanna say it's about seven miles over the whole project. As of like their spacing, but those get a lot tighter whenever you get to urban populations or populated areas up in there. Versus when you're out in the middle of nowhere and you're getting up to those thicker pipeline diameters.
Yeah, for some, it's gonna be a twenty-four inch pipeline and they had their proposals at twenty miles apart.
They said the max was twenty miles.
And two miles, didn't they say two miles within?
Well, and then by Irvington, they had it down to like eight miles, but that's still.
There's no minimum and maximum, I know the maximum was twenty, but that's specifically regulated by FEMA.
Didn't they say?
About twenty miles, I wanna say.
Oh, yeah, it shows.
But FEN, FENSA is reviewing these rules again too.
See, uh, that's coming with the legislature, uh, I'm not sure where that's gonna go at the moment, but. They are updating, at least navigator's whole thing is they're above all safety, uh, above and exceeding safety parameters.
Yeah, they have one directly south of, south of Elcona, near one sixty-nine, and then one by P fifty-six.
So, they aren't too far apart, they, both, both sides are Irvington, correct?
Yeah, yep, Irvington's almost centered between there.
Yeah.
And then there's two just outside the county in Palo Alto and Hancock, a little ways.
Well, that's pretty much on the county border.
So, how far are you on navigator and getting easements and?
So, last number I heard was about twenty percent across the state, but they only opened those land negotiations in October. And I was also in Little Harvest, so they sent out all the notifications, they've got the heck out of Dodge, let them all take care of their harvest. Now we're starting to get some of the snowbirds back in, I know they're starting to set the focus out now. I was gonna say now the land is starting to thaw, we just had full spring and now we're gonna be back in winter, um, but. I know our land, the, their land agents, I should say, are starting to go back out now.
Yeah, and the county doing easement.
I couldn't tell you specifically who is where, but I know that they have been.
I've, I have been getting calls from people that had meetings scheduled with them, so I can't say whether they signed or not, but I know they are. Working here, I don't know if it's one agent or twenty agents, but they are.
I do find that.
Discussing. That's probably not information that we need right now.
We don't need it, I'm just curious. Your surveying's all done?
As far as I'm aware, I, I am brand new to the team, I, I signed up, it's the end of my first month now, so.
Yeah, he's taken the spot that Lainey had before, he moved on.
He's up with Senator Raskin now.
Yep. So.
Okay.
This new face for us, so.
John?
Um, yeah, we had the emergency management meeting last Thursday night to. Um, address a couple of issues, I won't get into that because. Got an email from Carissa Friday, there were some issues with that meeting, um, due to. Misrepresentation, the quorum was not met. And the votes did not count, so that meeting, any decisions made in that meeting are nonvoid. So, she will be scheduling another meeting and I'm not sure as to when that will be. And then Saturday, we did the, um, we had the legislative. Forum with uh, Henry Stone and Dave Rowley. Got to talk with them a little bit afterwards and got some questions and stuff posed about different things with tax. Um, bills and, and pipeline issues and things like that, so. Um, that was, that was pretty good, it was. Very informative from them on some other things too, they also went over a little bit on the ESA accounts. There are the, the ESAs and stuff that passed and, and discussed, uh, some people had. From the community had questions about, um. Accountability of the schools and things like that, um. A lot of good information, and next week, uh, we had quite a few meetings going on, so. Um, Monday, we got the planning and zoning hearing and then. From there, I have a few other things, but I'll talk about those next week.
So, the only thing on my list that hasn't been discussed so far is Thursday afternoon, we had. Uh, that landowner meeting with Drain one twenty-nine up in Lakota, um. I thought it went fairly well, there was not quite as much discussion from, and like. Input from the landowners during the meeting as I would have liked, but I visited with some after the meeting, I think they were just shy and quiet, kinda like. All the other meetings we have, everyone who's supportive of it is usually quiet, um. But the big takeaway for me there was, there was not anyone that was opposed, everyone understood the tile was in poor condition. And it was a gathering information discussion as far as what to proceed for the engineers. On our side, the staff for Fairbolt County and their attorney on their side, um. There, uh, there's several things that were discussed there, but it was a good meeting, we're gonna work on stuff and keep moving forward, so.
Good, I heard about it.
Good? Positive feedback?
Most of it, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't hear anything negative, you know, they just had questions.
Yep, yep, that's good.
Yep, so. Most of it was, they wanted to know what the original report was, but it was that six, seven years ago.
Ten.
Ten, yeah, it's been a while.
In twelve, twenty twelve.
I remember it.
So, it's, it's something, and that was discussed briefly, it's something like Tyler and Bolton may can look at, but. We are past that timeframe, that it's not an eligible survey and all that stuff anymore, they will still have to. Do their own work to verify that, but it still is. A piece of the discussion for knowledge base, I guess.
The biggest question I had is. If there wasn't any cover before on it going into Minnesota, how come there wouldn't be now, and I, I just, to my way of thinking, you're gonna have to move the tile.
So, in their, in their presentation, that was one thing that was addressed fairly early by Fairbolt County, um. It looked like there's about four to five feet in the ditch that the tile could go down, um. That is dependent on the typical water level in the ditch, obviously you can't go right to the bottom. As you and I both know, but the, the discussion there was, um. One of the landowners, I believe they're right along the ditch, they said that ditch is typically almost always empty or very low. So, even, even in high water events, they said it, it doesn't stay high very long.
It's beginning.
Well, so that's, that's a benefit, so there is a potential to pick up significant cover from that, um. They can go through the engineering to figure out what other options are, but the recommendation from. The attorney from Minnesota was to look at all the limiting factors for the project, whether, I mean. We've talked about half inch, three quarter and one inch coefficients here for other projects, so he said. Put everything on the table, look at your limiting factors, say. If we could build whatever, this would be the first thing to stop it, and then find out what fits under that. And then once you do that, make sure you account all your limiting factors and say, these are even feasible options. And then you get into some of the costs of them and justification that way, but, um. Obviously, the ditch is a limiting factor, the ground cover's limiting, so there's. Multiple pieces to that equation.
Still up for an improvement, so not just a repair.
So, yeah, um, the feedback I got from landowners was definitely looking at the improvement side of things. I think half inch is the most logical, if you get to, even if it's physically possible, which I'm not sure if it is, that's up to the engineers. But even if it's physically possible, the regulation side of Minnesota for the three quarter. And one inch coefficients is increasingly difficult from conversations with Fairbolt County. So, they said half inch was pretty much the drainage standard, they go by anymore for any improvements. So, I think that would be reasonable, but above that, I think our administrative headache. To get something accomplished would get substantial and. I guess the feedback I've gotten from landowners up there is a half inch, half inch coefficient on improvement project would be. Significant, they would be very satisfied with that, so.
The concern I had out of a couple people was that we're gonna spend a lot of money on engineering fees and that you're not gonna do anything in the end.
I, I don't think that'll be the case this time. And I'll, I'll work to make sure that it's not the case.
Well, last time Minnesota stopped us.
Well, I don't think that'll be the same this time.
Good.
So, but, I mean, we can't do it without engineers, so we don't, we don't really have an option there, but. Well, the follow-up I would say to that is, even if we don't do an improvement. A repair is mandatory on both sides of the border, so if a repair is done with. New pipe supplies and, um, we could deepen the pipe without changing the capacity and still have it be a repair. On both sides of the, both sides of the border, so worst case scenario. The entire district could be repaired and landowners would still see. An improvement from that, because the tile has deteriorated so far, they're not getting. The drainage that they should have got, or should be getting, so something, something will be done in the end, it's a matter of. To what extent, but something will be done this time.
Anything else? I didn't have anything last week that was.
Not already mentioned.
Yeah, not, that hasn't been gone through, I went to the same meeting Josh did and then he did a good job of explaining it, so. I don't have to do anything. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks? Thanks for coming in.